I think I just saw Associate Pastor Chris Peters walk in the back from Trinity Presbyterian Church. He's going to lead us to start our meeting. So, everybody rise and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Let us pray. God of all creation, we give you thanks for the beauty of our setting here in Fairhope and for all who live here. Help us live out our gratitude by caring for this land and for the waters around it. Help us live out our hospitality by welcoming our neighbors. We pray for the members of this council and for Mayor Wilson. We know that their work is not easy, so we pray their discernment may be wise. We give thanks for all city workers, from our police and first responders to our trash and recycling collectors, maintenance people, clerks, office staff, all of them. As we pray for a bright future for Fairhope, help us to see that our actions are just as important as our reputations. And so, we ask for the good work ahead with hope and gratitude for all the gifts of our lives. Amen.
(inaudible)
Thank you, Mr. Peters. We appreciate you being here. Before we get started, guys, I wanted to ask you guys about walking on a resolution for the closing of the K-1 Center. And it's for the additional title work that needs to be done. And it reads, "Be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract for professional services for closing cost and title insurance on the K-1 Nick Center property purchases with Kapeski and Britt LLC with a cost not to exceed $15,000." And just so you guys know, that $15,000 would include the insurance, the title search, and all the closing fees, recording fees. And I'd like to ask you guys to walk that on for tonight's meeting.
Make a motion. We walk that on?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All right. So, we'll add that on as Agenda Item Number ... well, we've got to vote for it, right? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. The motion passes. It will be added to the agenda. So, we'll add that on as number 23 before participation. All right. Number one is to approve the minutes of the July 8, 2019 Regular City Council Meeting and the July 8, 2019 Work Session. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion or changes? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Minutes are approved. Mayor Wilson, your report.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm going to wait till he gets that up. Okay. The Fairhope Police Department is sponsoring its annual back-to-school event at the Methodist Church this Saturday, July 27, from 10:00 to 2:00. I think last year, they gave out those who are in need for uniforms, backpacks, school supplies, around 300 kids. And the value for each kid is around $300. So, it's really a great event. The kids have a lot of fun. And in addition to the regular activities they have going on, the department is adding a water balloon fight between the officers and the kids. There will be no adults fighting against the cops. It's just kids. Anyway, that should be fun. It starts at 10:00 a.m. sharp. I want to thank everyone at the Police Department for making this event such a success each year. And at the Nick Center, they're always busy and always inventive in its offerings for our citizens and our seniors. Jim and Misty will start a new coffee and tea with us where members can sit one-on-one to discuss ideas and whatever's on their mind. These meetings will be held at the first Friday of every month, 10:00 a.m., beginning August And I've mentioned this before, but I'm going to mention it probably every council meeting leading up to November 15th, our 125th anniversary, Fairhope's anniversary. Citizens are welcome to submit short recollections of their fondest memories of their time in Fairhope. So, you don't necessarily have to live here to contribute, but we definitely want our citizens to share special memories, and this is up to 300 words. Email them to the125th@fairhopeal.gov. And when you ... it's on the front page of our website also under 125th Anniversary, and you can see who's submitted so far. And we ask that you send a picture as well. But we hope that we can look back on this for the 150th anniversary and see what all has changed. Geese, always an emotionally mixed subject. Despite our more subtle attempts at encouraging the geese at North Beach to move on to greener pastures, the flock continues to grow in numbers each year. This is a health hazard that we now must address more aggressively. We are taking a three-pronged approach, the first of which will be ... we are going to have border collies. These are trained border collies that stalk the geese humanely. And we've already done a trial run a couple of weeks ago, and this did work. We just want to make sure that they, when they leave, they don't find it comfortable to come back. We're going to continue the high-intensity LED beacons to keep the geese feeling insecure. I know that's sad, but they do, they are effective, but they, the geese come back and kind of get used to them. So, we're going to do everything. And then, last, but probably the most important thing, is we need the citizens to stop feeding them. The city will strictly enforce our ordinance against feeding the geese. For as much fun as it is to, you know, to have kids feed them, geese are dangerous. Not only does it destroy their digestive system, I mean, feeding them is dangerous. They're not dangerous to us, but they do yap a lot. But it damages their digestive system, and it is not a natural, they're not, it's not their natural diet. It makes them dependent upon you and kills their natural instinct to feed themselves. The ordinance has been in effect for a year now. However, this has not reduced the habit enough to, so we have to start enforcing it more. After September 15th, if, well, leading up to September 15th, people will get a warning. But after September 15th, we'll give some leeway. It says September 10th, and since I've already said 15th, we've got to change it to the 15th. If you're caught, that means you'll have to go to court, and the judge will decide how much the fine will be. It's more of a hassle than anything, but if we don't stop this, we're going to continue having geese, and it is a big complaint right now. There has been a lot of misinformation spread around social media about the Greeno Road overlay. To get the facts, citizens are invited to attend the Planning Commission meeting Monday, August 5, where the overlay will be reviewed, and an audience comments and questions are welcome. We will be taking no action at this time. This is just a community input and a work session for our planning commissioners and the Planning Department. I want to make certain that our citizens understand that there are required laws to make such changes, and we are following all of them required. To get accurate information, please attend the Planning Commission meeting on August 5, 5:00 p.m. And the slideshow that will accompany this presentation is online under our Planning I am happy to announce that fuel sales are strong at the Fairhope docks. Memorial Day weekend, we sold over $12,000, and July 4th, the same worth of fuel. The revenue at the marina is just about at the breakeven point, where it covers our daily operation expenses in less than two years. Major bulkhead and dock repairs begin this summer and are sure to increase slip rentals. And continuing our legacy as a fishing port, we are home once again to active commercial shrimpers and fresh shrimp, can be purchased right off the boat. Call the marina to learn how to find out more about this. And some other good news, our Parks and Recs Department has been working for several years now on an organic fertilizer system and program. The department, which includes, you know, all of our parks, now the golf course and football stadium, all of our parks, are now at 93% organic fertilizers. The goal is to eliminate synthetic products completely. Public Works has joined this effort, and our Superintendent of Quail Creek is also going organic. Not only does this help our environment in all the ways you can imagine, the positive results we are seeing in healthier turf is remarkable, and we have been receiving more positive compliments at the golf course than ever before. And I guess I didn't make the last one, but I had, the last slide was just a ton of money. And this update was ... I think I have the wrong ... well, what I was going to say, and the slides off this, and so are my notes, but our Treasurer, Kim Creach, has been negotiating and with our current banks. And for operating account and reserve accounts, she has negotiated higher interest rates for interest income for the city. And these negotiated rates will net the city in 2020 approximately $500,000. So, congratulations to her and taxpayers. We really appreciate it. That's all I've got.
Thank you. And guys, I'm going to do my best to speak into the microphone. If you cannot hear me out there at any point, shout or raise your hand. Moving forward, though, the next is public participation for Agenda Items. So, this is public participation for Agenda Items, numbers 5 through 23. If you've got anything to speak as far as those items are concerned, now is your opportunity.
I really do hate to be the one that frequently comes up here and speaks, but Councilman Robinson, as you walked on a K-1 issue, I'm going to take this opportunity now instead at the end of the meeting to talk about a couple of items. Good evening. My name is John Manellas. I live at 104 White Avenue. A couple of years back, the Fairhope Educational and Richmond Foundation, FIF, developed an architectural rendering of their vision for the K-1 property. Included was their hope for a steam center in addition to the current Pelican's Nest, both geared toward K-12 students attending Baldwin County schools. Also included was a performing arts center and the use of the old K-1 main schoolhouse and adjoining one-story structures, which I like to call the monopoly buildings, for educational and cultural activities. FIF, as you know, has been an important part of this community in augmenting the educational needs of the Fairhope feeder schools. Fairhope children have greatly benefited over the years from their efforts and contributions. Last fall, most citizens, including myself, learned that the city was involved in negotiating with the school board to purchase the K-1 site, which had been vacated for several years. A group of civic-minded individuals, including myself, reached out to all five of you council members and the mayor, and you generously gave of your time, meeting with us several times, so that we could express a couple of concerns to you. Probably the most important thing that I would encourage the council to do first and foremost, as you proceed in determining what is done with K-1, is that you engage its citizens to determine how they would like to see this property developed on their behalf. Mayor Wilson arranged for a K-1 community engagement forum in April of this year, which lasted three hours and was attended by 100 citizens, including most of you. For those unable to attend, the City of Fairhope sent out an online survey to solicit input. The whole purpose of the session and survey was to arrive at a consensus as to what the citizens of Fairhope want done with their property. Those results were reported to you earlier in the work session, and for citizens viewing at home tonight, I would encourage you to take a look at that via YouTube to see what the mayor and Jessica Walker presented as to what the consensus of the citizens would like to see done with K-1. Ryan Baker, an architect and principal with Walcott Adams Vernell, has generously drafted an architectural rendering of the K-1 site based on the outcome of this community engagement meeting, as well as the survey results. It's an exciting design, which incorporates the surrounding ecosystem, preserves the main K-1 school building, which many people were concerned about, and includes a new standalone performing arts center. I hope that in the near future, Mr. Baker shares his rendering with the general public. It is my belief, it is the belief of myself and many others, that although well-intended, the FIF rendering should no longer serve as the blueprint for the development of the K-1 site. The City of Fairhope should develop its own renderings based on the desires and consensus of the overall community, similar to what Mr. Baker has envisioned. There are some aspects of FIF's rendering that are reflected in the community consensus, but not all. Secondly, it is my belief and many others that any plans and programs for educating K-12 students should be done on school board property. The Baldwin County School Board representatives have stated that upon sale to the city, they no longer will fund any school activities on this property. It's our understanding that they have even offered to relocate the Pelican's Nest to school board property, where it can be better integrated into school activities. Finally, our group of civic-minded citizens has been characterized by several supporting FIF's vision as a bunch of old retired people, the implication being that we don't care about kids and education. Well, let me set those straight that have taken offense to any suggestion of any other ideas other than what FIF has proposed. I am guilty of being a senior, as defined by Medicare, and yes, I am retired. I make no apologies for either. Our member of our group, or one of our members of our group, Bob Riggs, is a former university president. Another is a former official with the University of Alabama. Like those who are less advanced in years, like us, most of us raised children in public schools. I raised two sons who attended Cobb County Schools in suburban Atlanta. I've always supported school tax increases, and Robert Brown, I strongly support the proposed three-mill increase for the feeder, Fairhope feeder schools. When I moved here from Fort Bend County, Texas, a suburb of Houston, I was paying $7,000 in property taxes, of which $5,000 went to the school district. Yes, you heard that right, $5,000. That was in 2010. My sons, my sons had long since graduated from high school at that time, but I never once complained about paying my school tax. When I moved to Fairhope in a similarly valued property, my property taxes are $2,300 a year. I have no idea what portion of that goes to the school district. But I would gladly pay more. In fact, I'd pay double that, because like many other people, I would like to see the students of Baldwin County get the best education that they deserve. Unfortunately, we live in a divisive, zero-sum game time in our society. Hence, you're either with us or you're not. And if you're not, somehow you're the enemy. While people can differ on viewpoints, ideas, and vision, and still be cordial, respectful, and friends. Council members, it is my hope that you create a new blueprint for what is possible for the K-1 site, that you think big, with a vision of what will serve the citizens decades from now, that you engage individuals such as Mr. Baker and urban planners, who can transform the ideas of the greater community into something that we can all be proud of, something that accentuates what this beautiful city of ours is known for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else to speak on Agenda Items number 5 through 23?
Please.
(laughing).
I believe it's Agenda Item Number 8, having to do with the library.
Yes.
My name is Megris Rudolph. I am an employee of the library, and I would like to tell you that on this past Tuesday, I was taking a break, and I was sitting in a section of the library that's not too far from the teens section, and the teens were laughing. They were on the computers. They were having discussions, and I really had to fight not going and telling them, "Shh." And I didn't want to, because they were having a good time. This whole thing of our being able to now hopefully use the upstairs part of the library is going to benefit all of us. It's a win-win situation. It's a win-win for the teens. They will move up to areas where we can close the doors. They will still be watched. We can close the doors, and they can enjoy themselves, and we will get that additional space. So, please consider that it is for the best of the community that we have the upstairs of the library. Thank you.
All right. Seeing nobody out, close public participation and move on to council comments. Council McConyers.
Really don't have a whole lot of comments, other than just saying that on Item Number 8, I know the library's been waiting patiently the entire time I've been council liaison to the Library Committee. This is something they've been hoping for, so I know that they're anxious to have that space, and we've got a lot of great things going on, so I'm sure they can make use of it. So, that's it. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Brown?
Thank you. Mayor, I had a question about the "Feed the Duck" sign that you showed on your mayor's report.
Okay.
The ordinance says, "Do not feed them," correct?
Correct.
But this one, the sign said, "Do not feed them bread."
Oh, it does? We might need to, there's, that's just one sign, and I was trying to search all my pictures under geese, and that came up. But we do have a lot more signs than that. Are you familiar with them, Lynn, the other ones?
The other ones are all, "Do not feed the geese."
Okay.
And it's the ordinance, not the law.
Oh, okay. That's probably the larger one.
The sign was a little confusing, you know, based on the ordinance, "Do not feed us," but it says, "Do not feed us bread," so.
Yeah, the sign that was shown said, "We like cut grapes and bird seed."
Chop lettuce.
We need to take that one down.
It doesn't say, "Feed them that," it just says, "We like it," so it's given, you know, bird options.
Not only, yes, we're actually going to keep them here with the things they like.
We were fighting them after people would not stop feeding them, so we suggested, you know, when we could, when we had nothing to enforce the ordinance, we suggested, okay, this is what, if you want to feed them, feed them this. I'm sure that didn't help any.
So, I guess this was in 2017.
But if we're trying to get rid of them, shouldn't we feed them things they don't like? Is said.
Well, this stuck into the inhuman discussion.
We won't feed them.
That's not what I was implying. Sorry, Robert. Anything else?
Yes, I do have more.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, I want to continue to let people know, September 17th is the referendum for the three-mill special tax district for the five Fairhope schools. And then, also, from the work session, there was a couple of slides put up about information that came from the K-1 community input, little study that was done, and a couple of the slides indicated environmental stressors and environmental stewardship. We talked about sewer spills during the work session as well, but I encourage Mayor Wilson, this is a top-down failure, council, mayor, Sewer Department, whoever else that can resolve this issue, it's a failure on all of us, and I encourage everybody to do better, to try to get more solutions. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Boone?
Well, since Robert stole my thunder, I actually have no comments at all. Thank you.
All right. And I just want to follow up on a couple of things briefly. The mayor put up the back-to-school with blue program. It really is fantastic. Even if you've just come out to enjoy your community, our police officers are out there. They really put on a great day. It's usually pretty hot, but you probably get in the Dunkin' booth and might share it with you.
They're not going to have it this year.
Oh, no Dunkin' booth this year?
I don't think so.
No Dunkin'? Okay, no Dunkin' booth.
At the water balloons.
But there's water slides and all kind of other fun stuff to do. Water balloons. And then, you know, something that Mr. Manellas said, you know, if you've seen, and I don't think it has, but if you've seen Mr. Baker's drawings for the K-1 Center, and it was really, I think, done to just give everybody a little bit of spatial awareness, to see what all can be done with that property, and actually how much property there is just at the K-1 Center, he included it all. I mean, there's room for everybody's ideas to be done there, performing arts, education, you know, civic offices. There's a lot of room there, and I think that was his design in doing it, was to let everybody see exactly how many different things we could do there. And it's really exciting to be able to see that and visualize what the potentials are for that. And so, just because you hear one thing or disagree with one thing, that doesn't mean that everybody's options can't be considered, and there isn't room for everybody's ideas to be accomplished in moving forward with this project. But with that, I will close council comments, and I will move to Agenda Item Number 5, which is an ordinance to establish and adopt policy and procedure for sleeping in vehicles out of doors and in, or in non-residential zones to protect the public health, safety, and welfare with the City of Fairhope corporate limits and its police jurisdiction. Before I ask anybody to introduce the ordinance, I would like to see a small change made. If you look at the second page of the ordinance, under exemptions, under Paragraph 1, under Paragraph D, it includes youth campouts, and it talks on any residential zoned lot or where a principal occupied structure exists, but not to exceed two consecutive days. I would like us to remove the two consecutive days, to not limit outdoor campouts at private residences for any specified period of time. I think in general, the ordinance is good, and I think it's going to be helpful in our community. But that particular thing, it was brought up as sort of an issue in the work session, and we kind of moved past it. But I do think, I've gotten some feedback that that's, it gives a little heartburn to some of the citizens, and I don't disagree with it. And I think it still accomplishes what we're trying to do without any over-strict residential requirements. And so, Lisa, do I need to do anything else?
There's nothing for amendment, as long as it's introduced with that stated.
Okay. And so, if someone would be willing, I would, you can introduce it as written, or you could introduce it with removing the, "but not to exceed two consecutive days" from page 2.
I'll introduce it with the alteration.
Okay. All right. So, it has been introduced, the ordinance has been introduced with no restriction on consecutive days for youth campouts on residential property. With that said, Chief, you want to come up and address any issues? Okay. Anybody got any questions, I guess, for Chief regarding this particular issue?
No, I don't have any issues with that at all. In fact, I've had, I've talked to several people who have the same concerns, and I think that, I think mainly that was put in there. Again, we took that from another city, and to, and they don't allow any backyard camping in their, in their city limits. So, I think that making that change would be, I mean, I think that would be great.
Councilman, anybody got any questions for the Chief regarding this ordinance? Anybody interested in suspending with the rules and voting for immediate consideration?
I would like to.
I'm going to vote no, so.
I still would like to.
Okay.
Because we don't have to. Stickler.
All right. Without it being unanimous, this will lay over for two weeks, and we'll vote on it the next council meeting. Thank you, Chief. You may.
In reference to the change that you want to make, I need to let you all know that we are having issues down at the marina, where people are using marina property to get to the beaches in front of the houses on Sea Cliff. They're on the bay, and we've had reports of them camping out there. And they are not the people who own the house. So, we need to think.
Well, that would be trespassing, though. That would be a different issue.
That would be trespassing. But that is part of, correct me if I'm wrong, Marcus, that is part of what they consider their backyard, their private property.
That's right.
That's a trespass issue. If that's their private property, they need to, and if they got warning signs, they warn somebody, stay off, they can have the police come and ask for the rules. come and ask for the door.
Okay. Then is the wording that you want, is that going to be specifically family on their own private property?
It says, "Children of residence."
Okay.
So I would imagine any straggler, adult stragglers who camp out on other people's property would be.
No. Okay, thank you.
All right. Agenda Item Number Six is a resolution that the City of Fairhope authorizes acceptance of the grant award from A D C N R and authorizes the mayor to sign the grant agreement between the State of Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources and the City of Fairhope relating to working waterfront and green space restoration project, A C D N R, Grant Number M I, M-1A14-FHWW Restore Act Phase One, in the amount of $539,266 for all eligible project costs and other grant-related documents on behalf of the city for Phase One.
So moved.
I've got a motion, got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
Just say that we have a lot of, we've narrowed this down to four teams that are going to be presenting on Friday. The four teams that are going to be presenting, I mean, every one of them is really, really impressive. So this is a pretty substantial project, and I feel really good about our options and very much looking forward to seeing what all they have to, have to say in person. On paper, they all look good. And there were eight of them, and I'd say, what, maybe 75 to 100 pages per submission? So there's a lot, a lot of information to read through.
Very, very good proposals.
All right, any other discussion? All right, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. Number Seven is a resolution that the City Council hereby approves the Farick Police Department's application for funding for the 2019 Walmart Foundation Community Grant for Community Outreach Material in the amount, in the amount of $2,500 with no matching funds. Chief, you want to tell us about this real quick?
This is, it's going to be, it's an annual grant that we apply for every single year. Where we've been able to use it in the past to purchase equipment and things that we've needed, that we didn't have the money for, that meant the $2,500. We normally purchase it through Walmart. And this year, they have, they reached out to us, told us that it was available, and we would like to use it to purchase some of our community outreach stuff. We could have used it primarily on our back-to-school program this year, but we didn't apply for it soon enough, or had not got it before the council soon enough. So, but we purchase books every year to give out at the schools. We do a lot of, you know, the footballs, frisbees, things like that. And we want to be able to use that money towards that.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All right, with no discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Or, well, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Item Number Eight is a resolution that the City Council accepts the cancellation of the lease with Coastal Alabama Community College, who will vacate the premises by July 31st, 2019, and to allow the Farick Public Library to use said space on the second floor. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I would just like to ask if Tamara would like to say anything about what all y'all have planned there. If not, then.
We are so excited. We've been waiting on this 12 years, as long as we've been in the building. But, and we've gone through all kinds of plans, but we're especially, yes. We especially are going to be excited about moving the teens. Their spot now is very cramped. It's very hard to get around. And then we're going to move our makerspace, which Allison is giving out to you, something that was printed on our, one of our 3D printers. And Allison, tell them about how long it took and all that kind of stuff.
Those are little doodads to put on your desk. They can hold your business cards and also about five pens, pencils. Each one took about two and a half, three hours to print on our little 3D printers.
Yep. So we already are partnering with schools. We have students coming in, and they have designs they want to print out for projects at schools. That's already happening. So we just, I mean, we are so excited because, especially because the makerspace is for all ages. And we're going to put up there the teens, the makerspace. We want to have a center for veterans, something that we've been planning for years, and there was no spots downstairs for that. And also, technical services. This is the department that Susan Demert heads up. They touch every single item that comes to the library, and they have to process it and catalog it. That can be very detailed and intense. And so we hope to provide for her and her assistant a private place, I mean, a workspace, a real workspace. So we're just like overflowing with gratitude for you all, and also for you, one of the great things that you've done for us and the mayor is getting the building fixed. I mean, that has been like a breath of fresh air, and it's just really energized us, and we're very grateful for that. And now this is another thing that I think you can do for the citizens, for the community. It just, it's for all ages, and I think we'll all benefit from this. So, any questions?
I've got a quick question. What specifically for veterans are you talking about?
We're talking about providing a computer, at least one, all kinds of information that comes for the veterans from the federal government state. And then we hope to develop it so appear, a veteran who can come up and stay in that area for, say, two hours a week or three hours a week or whatever. But we want it to be a resource for veterans.
And helping with benefits and such.
Yes, right, right. Opportunities that they might not be aware of.
That's awesome.
Yeah. So that's what that's about. We've had that vision for like two or three years, but we could not come up with a place to put it. Jimmy, where are you guys?
I was just going to say, thank you so much for what you do, for the library board, for the friends of the library and the employees of the library. Y'all are tremendous asset to Fairhope, and I just thank you for everything that y'all do.
Well, we love it, and everyone that works there is so passionate about the library and our vision and our mission. And I've had great staffs before, but this is one of the greatest I've ever had that has come to us now. And with the Board of Trustees, they're so positive about the library, the friends, the foundation. So I think the community support for the library has grown exponentially in the, in the years that we've been in this facility. So we've really flourished there and been able to provide opportunities that we had no idea we'd be able to. And I think the same thing will be true for the upstairs. We're so grateful and so excited.
It is exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, if not, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. If you guys could stick around and do that after we go through each one of these, that'd be great. All right, Number Nine is a resolution that the City Council hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a 3-1-1 service-level agreement, cooperative agreement between the City of Fairhope and T-Mobile South LLC, doing business as T-Mobile, for 3-1-1 dialing services. We talked about this just briefly in the work session, and this is for
Jeff is coming.
For non-emergency city calls. And I see Jeff coming in. I'll let him give us any other additional information we need. I'd like to commend Councilman Boone on his Google research skills during the work session to help us figure that out.
So we're open to working with AT&amp;T, Verizon, and T-Mobile. So this is a contract. Number Nine is with T-Mobile. Number Ten is with Verizon. So what this will allow residents to do is to dial 3-1-1 from their T-Mobile or Verizon devices and reach our Public Works office. And so what our, what our vision is, what we're hoping for is hopefully in the next agenda or the next council meeting, we'll get some 3-1-1 software that'll help us manage cases as they come in. Right now, it's kind of disorganized how we do it. We get phone calls, we pass along paper messages, maybe voicemail, maybe email. But we're going to try to integrate this into one system to where we can effectively track a customer's call from beginning to end and actually even keep the history. So if there's a recurring problem, we'll be able to see this. So this is just kind of the first step of creating our 3-1-1 system, is just be able to actually dial 3-1-1 in the City of Fairhope and reach us.
And Jeff, will this be for, I mean, could this be for sewer spills, or do we have other thing, another system? Is that, is that for them to, do they call in another way for that?
No, I think the best thing to do is just have one number, 3-1-1. That's the number you need for non-emergencies, dealing with utilities, anything with streets, roads, the city needs to address.
But this would help with that, though.
Absolutely.
I haven't asked for a motion or a second yet.
No, you haven't.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Counsel, any discussion or questions for Jeff regarding this? All right, with there being no, no discussion, I'll entertain, or I'll, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. Number Ten, Jeff, I think this is also you, a resolution that the City Council hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute an abbreviated dialing code agreement between the City of Fairhope and Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, for abbreviated dialing service.
Same thing. It's just allows the Verizon customers to call 3-1, 3-1-1 and reach the same number at Public Works.
Perfect. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I've got a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Item Number Eleven is a resolution that the City Council approves the selection of Moore Surveying Inc. for professional engineering services to provide a Young Street Community Park Survey, approves and accepts the not-to-exceed amount of $3,800, and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract with Moore Surveying Inc. for same. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions for Richard on this? Anybody want, anybody feel like they need any additional information on this? None? All right. Well, with there being no discussion or any additional questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, item passes. Number Twelve is a resolution that the City Council approves the selection of Payne Pipeline Services for Professional Engineering Services for the natural gas distribution pipeline compliance for RFQ number PS012-19, and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a three-year contract with a cost not to exceed $11,400 annually. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion or anybody, any questions for Richard on this item? All right, with there being no discussion or questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, item passes. Number Thirteen is a resolution that the City Council approves and awards RFP number 003-19 to Goodwin Mills and Kaywood, Inc., to provide architecture services for jail doors replacement, and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract with a not-to-exceed amount of $10,000. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions for Lance regarding these jail door replacements? Lance, I'll ask, how long is this going to take?
It could take a while, I mean, a week or two to actually build a door.
Right.
You know, everything's poured in and, you know, it's mowed in. So when you pull the door frame out of the wall of doors, no big deal. The frames are going to be, you know, you've got to get into a bit of work doing that. Because you actually cut them out, and you're going to have to pour them back in. You know, trying to get the schedule down, fill back in, like once going into the main jail there. I mean, you can't just leave it open overnight. It's going to be a big process involved when trying to get it, you know, to park them where they're safe and back up and have them.
Right. And I guess that was kind of what I was thinking, is how do you do this and replace them if it's not a one-day project and keep everything safe and secure in the meantime? All right.
Make sure the door's pretty.
All right. Any other discussion or questions for Lance, Cass? All right, do I have a, I have a motion and a second?
Yes, you do.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. Resolution number, or item Number Fourteen is a resolution that the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama hereby rejects bid number 022-19 for Substation 15 KV Vacuum Circuit Breakers for Project EL 003-17 for the Electric Department, and authorizes the city to solicit for informal bids in accordance with the Code of Alabama, Section 41-16-51B7. We were informed about this during the work session. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any additional questions or discussion on this item? All right, with there being no additional discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item Number Fifteen is a resolution that the governing body of the City of Fairhope hereby rejects bid number 021-19 for Substation Regulators for Project EL 003-17 for the Electric Department, and authorizes the city to solicit for informal bids in accordance with the Code of Alabama, Section 41-16-51B7. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any additional questions or discussion based on what we heard in the work session? All right, if there are no additional comments or discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item Number Sixteen is a resolution that the governing body of the City of Fairhope hereby rejects bid number 033-19 for Class III reinforced concrete pipe for the Public Works Department, and authorizes the city to negotiate a contract with one bidder pursuant to the Code of Alabama, Section 39-2-6B. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Richard touched on this briefly in the work session. If anybody's got any questions or discussion? With there being none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item Number Seventeen is a resolution to award bid for Batco Trailer for the Water Department, bid number 031-19 to Cowan Equipment Company, Inc., with a total bid proposal not to exceed $16,347. Okay.
Make a motion.
I've got a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion or questions?
$9,000 under budget.
$9,000 under budget. That's great. Good job. All right, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number Eighteen is a resolution to award the bid for new pickleball courts, rebid for the Recreation Department, bid number 032-19 to SC Stagner Contracting, Inc., with a total bid proposal not to exceed $76,428. Richard, we didn't get to talk about this in the work session. Will you come up and just, or Tomas, anybody want to?
You know, just to bring you back up to speed, if you remember, we rejected a bid on this and went back out for bid, you know, did not require mandatory bid, pre-bid meetings. We solicited as many vendors that we could get, and we came back to the exact same point and the exact same price we were when we rejected bid about six weeks ago. So Thomas and Mr. Cool felt that any, any other extraordinary efforts would not get any different results, so we're ready to recommend moving forward.
Well, at least, at least we tried.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion or questions for staff? All right, with there be, knowing would there be? All right, with there be no, knowing with there being no additional discussion or questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. Item number 19 is a resolution to award the bid for North Mobile Street Drainage Improvements for the Public Work Department, bid number 034-19 to Blade Construction LLC, with a total bid proposal not to exceed $173,430. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions, Council? Richard, will you want to come back up and address this? Just give us, just a brief.
If you remember, we covered this at a work session a good while back, and this is, was an opportunity where the engineering was provided by a private side, so we avoided that $30,000 worth of cost. We have the budget for it, and we're under what we had in the budget, and it's just one of those projects that we didn't get any phone calls from that area during this last rain event, because they know we're trying to fix the problem. So, that's already a positive sign there.
Sure. Thanks, sir. Council, I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with there being no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item number 20 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of an eight-inch Insta-valve for a fire hydrant at Pine and Bancroft Streets for the Police Department to be purchased from Consolidated Pipe and Supply Company, Inc., as sole source provider for team insert valve in the state of Alabama. This is an unbudgeted item with a cost of $8,000. Anybody want to talk about this? Jay?
Why does the Police Department need a fire hydrant?
I thought it sounded strange, but I read it as it's written.
All right, so what we're trying to do is remove a fire hydrant at Pine and Bancroft to facilitate wise construction at that apartment complex. We're doing it at cost. They're going to reimburse us all our money, and then they're going to move the fire hydrant probably about 75, 80 feet out of their own pocket. So, all we did was, we needed a valve in place to shut the line off, and so we charged them for that.
And they're going to reimburse this?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right, and so this should be for the Water Department?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion or additional questions? All right, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item number 21 is a resolution that the city council authorizes and approves the hiring of the new rental facilities assistant to allow the current rental facilities assistant, Josh Tipford, who has been employed with the city for 12 years, to train the new employee prior to his leaving in mid-August. This will be beneficial to the city as well as the new hire. Michael's here. First off, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. And then, Michael, you want to, I think this seems pretty self-explanatory, but...
Yes, sir. Josh is, he's been with us 12 years, and as you all know, he's moving on to finish his graduate studies, and we're trying to make a smooth transition for the new employee. 12 years is a lot of experience and a lot to pass on to somebody, so we're trying to make sure this is done smoothly before he does leave.
Sure. Council, I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions for Michael on this? I hate to see him leave. It's always sad when somebody's been here this long leaves, loses a lot of experience, a lot of institutional knowledge, it's hard to replace.
Yes, sir.
But hopefully, we'll give you some time that this new employee can be trained and before Josh leaves. All right? I've got a motion and a second. With there being no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Michael. Item number 22 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement for replacement roof of the Justice Center for the Police Department from Roof Doctors with a total cost of $26,300.
Make a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion. I got a motion? I got a motion?
Second.
I got a second. Lance, you want to give us a brief on this?
You, back, I guess, a year or so ago, you know, we had moisture issues in that building. As we remedied that problem with dehumidifiers, it got the building dried out. When we dried the building out, it caused plywood to warp on the roof of the building. So, pretty much, it just pulled the nails out of the plywood on each end. So, you got a lot of, you know, plywood that's warped across there and it's pushed the shingles up in multiple places, resulting in several leaks, which really kind of showed last week when we had that eight inches of rain. But, being as it's, you know, our first responder building, you know, we're trying to house that, we've got a main 911 server, city computer server and all over there, you know, I think that it's in our best interest to go ahead and do this as quick as we can. You know, we never know when we might have a storm next week, and it may not be there next week. So, we're going to reuse the plywood, we're going to re-screw everything and ring shank, nail it, and we'll put pill and stick, about as much as you can do to a shingled roof. So, it'll pretty much be like as good as it can be.
Okay. All right, I got a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion or questions for Lance, Gas?
Yeah, I got a question. I don't know, does a fortified program refer to commercial buildings as well? I should know the answer to that, but I don't.
I don't know, Rob.
But I think it would be worth investigating to get a secondary inspector to verify the method which is redone.
We can.
For the insurance savings.
We can, just absolutely. I mean, it's going to, it's going to bring it to code, and we're going to pill and stick the whole thing, so it'll be, it'll be back to a fortified roof standard when we get through with it.
So, it might be worth...
Absolutely.
Looking and see if the benefit will be there.
Okay. Yeah, we can look into that.
All right, any other discussion, questions? All right, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Next is item number 23, which is, was walked on earlier. It is a resolution that says, "Be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Fairhope, Alabama, that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract for professional services for closing costs and title insurance on the K-1 Nick Center property purchases with Kapeski and Britt LLC, with a cost not to exceed $15,000." I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions? All right, with there being no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. And last is public participation. This is for anything else, non-agenda items. Now's your chance. You've got three minutes. Welcome. Come up and tell us your name, please.
My name is Clarice Hall Black, and I live on Twin Beach Road. And I was out of town when the whole sewer spill happened or what have you, so I really need you guys to help us out. We are in the county, I know. However, we are smelling city crap all up and down our street. And we have been, I'm 44 years old, and it's been pretty much all my life since that station has been there. And it's not my community, it's the communities that are building up around us. Everyone that I know on that street is pretty much African-American, they're all on septic systems, so it's not their crap that's flowing up and down the road. And we need that fixed ASAP, because RSA is already about to put, I think, about 200 more houses above us. There is supposed to be another system that's going to be placed beside this system. I don't know if we're going to be connected with that, or if it's just going to be that community that RSA is building that will be on that. But either way, we need our area fixed first, because just today, it stunk horribly. And my child is six years old, and he knows that it stinks horribly, and it's not fair to anyone there at all. So, I see where we're spending money on a pickleball court, and South Mobile Street's not complaining because they're getting their drainage from the water. I wish it was only water, but it's poo. And it's in our swamps. We have to get out of our cars to help the turtles and everything cross the street because they're overrun with manure. My husband almost got physically assaulted outside at the May meeting that you guys had by Tim Lowry, who's a part of, he's the engineer for RSA, because he stood up here and spoke in front of you about this issue. We walk out there, my two kids are with him, so I'm like, who's running the show? The engineers, or you guys? It's definitely not us, you know? So, we just need y'all to help us out. Mayor Wilson, I thank you so much for coming out. She's been there, she's seen it firsthand. I don't know if you guys have been there. Take a little drive, we can meet you down there, and you can smell what we have to live through every single day. And one of your, actually a person who works for the city, lives across the street from this station, and she has to smell that. We can't even have family functions outside because of this situation. And eventually, I don't know, maybe we'll be a Flint, Michigan, because it's going to eventually run off into our water supply lines, and you guys don't have to worry about it because you don't live there, but we do. And we're always told shit has to run downhill for it to go uphill so it can get here to your stations. But guess what? There's a lot of hills in Fairhope, it doesn't just have to be in our neighborhood. But it seems like everything is coming through that one lift station. We've asked, how many houses are connected to ours? Because I can go somewhere else, and I don't even smell there. They don't have to deal with that. So, just help us out, please.